Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
We're going to have our pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning. We thank you that you are great and mighty. Nothing is impossible with you. Nothing is too hard for you. And today, as we, in Hillsborough County, it's Lung Cancer Awareness Month, we pray for a cure for lung cancer and every type of cancer. We pray for that quickly, that there will be a cure for cancer. And we pray for all those that are suffering with cancer right now and any type of sickness and disease. We pray for healing in their bodies. And we also pray today, a special prayer, for Commissioner Pat Kemp, who has served on this board. We pray for her. We bless her life. We thank you for the time that she has served here. And we just pray that everything that you have for her, Lord, that your will be done in her life. And we ask you to bless this meeting today in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to read in the rackets of absence of our Chairman, Commissioner Hagan, "Please be advised that I will be unable to attend today's B O C C meeting due to a previous commitment." This is from Commissioner Hagan. And now we'll have a proclamation presented by Commissioner Cohen. Good morning.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And thank you, Madam Chaplain, for those lovely words because we are talking about lung cancer awareness this morning, and that prayer is certainly appropriate and welcome this morning. So, thank you. I would like, at this time, to ask Dr. Eric Teloza from the Thoracic Oncology Department at Moffitt Cancer Center to please join me at the podium. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Raising awareness about lung cancer has never been more important. Although it is one of the most dangerous cancers, more and more treatments are being created to help those who are fighting this disease. According to the Lung Cancer Foundation of America, early detection screenings such as spiral computed tomography have been shown to reduce lung cancer deaths by 16% to 20%. Because of these findings, the U.S. Preventative Services Task Force now recommends annual computed tomography screenings for people who meet specific criteria. Organizations such as Moffitt Cancer Center, right here in this community, are instrumental in spreading the word about the importance of early detection screenings using computed tomography. It is my pleasure, this morning, to present them with this proclamation and also to declare November 2024 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. The proclamation reads, "Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of death among both men and women in the United States, claiming the lives of approximately 1,600 people each day, nearly equaling the deaths of breast, prostate, and colorectal cancers combined; and whereas more than half of people with lung cancer die within one year of being diagnosed, and when lung cancer is detected early in a localized stage, there is over a 63% chance of a five-year survival; and whereas in 2021, national eligibility requirements for low-dose computed tomography lung screening were expanded, an adjustment that is expected to significantly reduce health disparities in women and African Americans; and whereas approximately 15,500 Floridians will learn that they have lung cancer in 2024, and only 2.4% of Floridians considered high risk for developing lung cancer receive annual lung screenings, ranking Florida 42nd in the nation; and whereas in response to more inclusive guidelines and extreme underutilization of low-dose computed tomography lung screenings, Moffitt Cancer Center is committed to educating and screening communities in a collaborative effort with partner organizations and the launch of a mobile lung cancer screening unit, which will be the first mobile lung cancer unit in the state of Florida. And whereas Hillsborough County is committed to the eradication of lung cancer and supports the early detection of lung cancer in its residents and the advancement of clinical research in this field; and whereas Hillsborough County encourages public and private efforts to enhance research funding and education programs that address lung cancer and promote wide access to the latest screenings and treatments. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare November 2024 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to raise awareness about the severity of this disease and to encourage participation in low-dose computed tomography lung screening and voluntary activities to support tobacco cessation executed this 13th day of November 2024. Cancer, and particularly lung cancer, are something that have touched my family and dear friends. And I can tell you that it is a devastating diagnosis, and it's something that we really, any message that we can get out to people to stop smoking and to get screened will end up saving lives and saving a lot of heartache in a lot of families and communities. So with that, I invite you, doctor, to say a few words, and then we'll take a picture with the proclamation.
Great. Thank you very much. So my name is Eric Teloza. I'm one of the thoracic surgeons at the Moffitt Cancer Center here in Tampa. I want to thank the Hillsborough Board of County Commissioners for this impactful proclamation recognizing the importance of lung cancer screening awareness. Lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer-related deaths, but early detection can save lives. Lung cancer is a silent killer because it often progresses unnoticed until symptoms appear at an advanced age. 80% of lung cancers detected through screening are found at an early stage when curative treatment options exist. However, screening adherence in Florida is dismal. Less than 3% of Floridians who are eligible for lung cancer screening participate, even though it is covered by insurance, is quick and painless. So the criteria is that someone who smoked a pack a day for 20 years or two packs a day for 10 years and is at least 50 years old is eligible for this screening. So through your support, the Hillsborough Board of County Commissioners, in promoting lung cancer screening will directly help us reach more of our community members at risk, ensuring they have access to lung cancer screening care that they need. By working together, we can make a significant impact in the fight against lung cancer and improve health outcomes for our residents. Thank you again for your commitment to this cause and to the health of our community.
And I do want to acknowledge my friend Buddy Cutler, who is in the audience today, lung cancer survivor. He's received this proclamation in the past. It's great to see you again, and we want to invite you and the people from Moffitt Cancer Center to come up and take a photograph with the board. Thanks.
make Hillsborough County the best county in Florida. That said, we'll move right to Bonnie.
Yes, for changes to the agenda.
Yes.
We have one item that is deferred. This is Item A 37. It is deferred to December 18th. This is to approve and execute a change order with Hubbard Construction Company for the neighborhood resurfacing contract to complete the Tobacco Road in U.S. 92 at Gallagher Projects. We have several items for time certain. The first one is Item D1 at 10:00. This is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the substantial amendments to the program Year 20 and 21 and 24 Annual Action Plans to close the public comment period and adopt the substantial amendments to the annual action plans. Item D2 at 10:00 is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the requested and request that $5,635,817 in unencumbered hope funds be utilized for one-time use for activities that support the urgent community needs in the wake of Hurricane Helene in Milton for citizens with area median incomes of up to 220% for replacement of hurricane-damaged and/or unreparable mobile homes. Item D3 at 10:00 is to conduct a second public hearing and adopt a resolution designating approximately 2.36 acres as a brownfield area at a parcel located at 1308 North U.S. Highway 41 in Ruskin as a brownfield. Item E1 at 10:15, this is a special appearance by Craig Richard, President and CEO of Tampa Bay Economic Development Council, to present the final annual activity report for 2024. Item G2 at 10:30 is related to Items B5 and B6. This is to receive an update on the One Water Project, including the number of MBEs working on the project. Item B5 at 10:30 is to approve the first modification to the Progressive Design-Build Agreement with Garni Companies for Phase 1B Design Services and Initial Phase 2 Construction Services associated with the One Water Project South Waste Water Conveyance and Treatment Project. This is related to Items G2 and B6. And then Item B6, related to Items G2 and B5, is to approve the fifth modification to the agreement with Corolla Engineers for additional and continued professional services associated with the South County One Water Program for the Water Resources Department. Item B1 at 10:45 is to accept the employee compensation accruals report performed by the County Internal Auditor's Office. And 11:45 is the B O C C farewell ceremony. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen? Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay, we'll move right into public comments. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Each citizen would have three minutes, and we ask that you do not address board members directly. Our first speaker is Alexander Rivera.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Alexander Rivera, and I stand before you today to address an issue that is increasingly critical in our community: affordable housing. This issue is not just a statistic. It is the lived reality for many of our residents, including my own family. Just a few years ago, my mother was able to afford her rent at a reasonable $900. This allowed her to live comfortably, manage her finances, and contribute to our community. However, over time, the cost of her rent has nearly doubled to nearly, to an unsustainable $2,000. Just to remind you, my mom is a mom of three adult children with two who have special needs, including autism and ADHD. This drastic increase is not an isolated incident, but a reflection of a broader trend that affects countless families across our county. The consequences of such rapid rent hikes are severe. Families are forced to make difficult disorders between essential needs such as food, healthcare, and education. The stress of financial instability takes a toll on mental and physical health, and in the worst cases, can lead to homelessness. I urge you, members of the Board, to prioritize policies and initiatives that consider -- I do apologize. I urge members of the Board to prioritize initiatives that address the urgent, this urgent issue. Consider measures such as rent control, increased funding for affordable housing projects, and incentives for developers to develop more affordable units. We must also explore innovative solutions like community land trusts and cooperative housing models that can provide sustainable long-term affordability. Together, we can build a community that values and supports every individual, enduring that no one is left behind due to this soaring cost of housing. I thank you, members, for your time, and thank you again, Commissioner Kemp, for your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Councilman Louis Vier. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. A real pleasure to be here, and good morning to everybody here, and happy belated Veterans' Day, I believe, Commissioner Sapata, and Commissioner Wostel. Happy belated Veterans' Day to everybody here. A real pleasure to be here today. I think the things I'm going to be talking about, we're all in general agreement on. I just wanted to just stress, as somebody that has the pleasure of representing an area that was disproportionately affected in the aftermath of Hurricane Milton, just some principles that I would really like to see in this independent commission that we're looking at, and I thank everybody for supporting this. You know, obviously, Milton gave a real shock to the system here in Hillsborough County, whether it's East County, whether it's Town and Country, whether it's North Tampa, parts of South Tampa, et cetera. And I'm glad that everybody is coming together to take a look at an independent commission that would look at what went right, what potentially went wrong, and what we can do better here in the future. But a couple of quick principles that I wanted to stress, and I think we're all on board, which is, number one, this has got to be, obviously, an independent commission. Nothing against county staff, nothing against city staff. We value them and their public service. But given that issues had happened, I think it's better to have it as independent as possible and to have it with an entity, whoever it may be, that is disconnected, I guess, if you will, from the government entities. Better to do it a little bit later and do it right than do it now and have challenges that may come back later in the future. You need to have, I would suggest, and I think everybody supports this, ownership and buy-in from all applicable entities, whether it's the City of Tampa, whether it's Plant City, whether it's Temple Terrace. I spoke to Mayor Andy Ross this morning, and he's obviously very supportive of that. And I believe, note my qualification, I believe there's support also in the City of Tampa for that as well. We obviously need community input. There were a lot of people who have taken an amazing, remarkable hit after Milton, as well as after Helene, and their voices need to be heard. There are many unique perspectives because everything is different. The issue that may have happened in Parkland Estates in South Tampa is unique from the issue that may have happened with the pump generators in North Tampa, which is unique what may have happened in East County, which is unique and distinct from what may have happened in Town and Country. These are all separate things, and that also requires tremendous community input. So again, I really, really thank this Board for taking the leadership on this issue. This is something, guys, that we're going to do together. And, you know, I've worked with everybody here on this issue, Republicans and Democrats, and we're going to work together for our constituents that we feel so passionate about and that we're all going to work hard for, not as Republicans or Democrats, but as good public servants. So I'll be here, and again, just to offer my support, and I thank this Board, all of y'all, for your leadership. Thank you, and God bless you. Thank you.
Hi. Hello. Can you please state your name for the record?
Sorry. Louis Vier, City of Tampa. Thank you.
Ellsworth Williams. Ellsworth Williams. Denise Herndon. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Denise Herndon, and I'm here to complain about the sheriff deputy falsifying sheriff records, body cams edited from the sheriff's department, hacked clerk of the court, and property appraiser sites. The first time I spoke at this meeting was in the first week of February, and I stated then, I'm not schizophrenic, delusional, or psychotic, and I wear purple and brown for over five years, purple for the royalty of God, brown for everything on this earth, that this is my faith and trust in God, that everything I'm saying, I will be vindicated. Shirley Hammond and Jeff Bezos have been my son's dark web people since 1996, when my son was 10 and 1/2. On this date here, I was sitting in Shirley Hammond's office, telling her about how I just came from the property appraisers with my survey, that they were trying to charge me taxes on the utility easement that I ingress and egress to get to my property because I have no road frontage property. When I came here, and the swell has been removed, that was put down in September 2020 when my road was repaved. I was, Shirley Hammond told me to be quiet. She turned on the radio and said, "I have to listen to this." I heard the announcement of Phyllis Brusansky's death in Orlando. Shirley Hammond didn't even buy the Kearney House on the east side of me until July 2009. You can't do anything about this misinformation about Phyllis Brusansky, but you can do something about the hacked sheriff's reports, falsified sheriff's reports, hacked clerk of the courts, and appropriate appraisers, because when they started researching the utility easement that I accessed, it's now a right-of-way. It was not a right-of-way when I moved in, and it wasn't a right-of-way when I heard of Phyllis Brusansky's death in Shirley Hammond's office. I didn't even start going over to Shirley Hammond's place until 2010. I contacted the FBI in 2014, and since then, and they haven't done anything, but you county commissioners can do something about this, and you will face consequences when you don't take action of your records being hacked into and the deputies lying and Cronister not doing anything. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Our next speaker and final speaker, Chris Ann Hall-Virchell. Chris Ann.
Hello, my name is, yes.
Good morning.
Hello, my name is Chris Ann Hall. I spoke to your several, good morning. I spoke here several weeks ago, along with dozens of others, in opposition to Hillsborough County giving away our tax dollars to nonprofit corporations that ought to be used, using their nonprofit status to raise money from donors rather than taking essential tax dollars that ought to be used for urgently needed repairs and improvements of our infrastructure. Then came Hurricane Milton, that actually proved our point. I live in Brandon. I do not live in a flood zone. I did not live in an evacuation zone, yet my home, like so many others, flooded simply because Hillsborough County's infrastructure failed us. I listened to the last board meeting and literally cried, hearing the experts confirm that my home flooded not because of the hurricanes, but because the Hillsborough County infrastructure, namely the storm damage, drainage, fails. Can you imagine the frustration at having recently made that very argument through this board, only to have my point proven at the damage of my own home? Three feet of running water down my street that would not have been there if this county had been focused on its purpose of maintaining the county rather than engaging in self-aggrandizing charity that should be left to nonprofits. My home has been a constant construction zone since the hurricane. We cannot even sleep in our bedrooms because of the water damage. My neighbors had similar damage and even lost vehicles. To add insult to injury because of this county's negligence to our infrastructure, my insurance is refusing to pay for any repairs. My family has to foot the entire bill for our repairs and now be gaslit into housing people with our tax dollars. In the last board meeting, I had to listen to the very same group who were demanding and gaslighting this board to give them our money for housing, now demanding gaslight this board to give them new housing because their housing flooded because of the failed infrastructure we were exposing. This is madness. Please do not spend another dime of our tax dollars on charity. Do not allow any new building projects in this county until a proper infrastructure plan has been created and repairs and improvements have been made. This is your responsibility, not charity. Have neglected this board has created this disaster. Do not continue these patterns of negligence. Send our money responsibly. Taxpayers will be fortunate if this county is not sued by homeowners for this documented and admitted negligence. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. This ends, I want to make sure Ellsworth Simmons, then Williams, did not come in. Okay. This concludes our public comment, so we'll move right into our consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move Consent.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, second by Commissioner Kemp, and Commissioner Wostel. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay. Bonnie?
We have some time before our 10:00 public hearings, so we can move to the regular agenda, and we're going to go to Item B2, and Josh Bellotti will present this item. This is a culmination of the various requests that the Board made pursuant to the hurricanes and getting information and putting together a committee that will get this information and a consultant that can help lead the way. So I'll have Josh Bellotti present this item.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Bellotti.
Good morning.
I'm hearing in operations. This agenda item offers a proposed plan for your consideration, based on the Board's direction at the October 23rd B O C C meeting. The Board directed that the appropriate key players be identified and brought back as recommendations for a multi-agency regional coordination effort to address stormwater and flooding. The Board directed staff to work together with these regional partners on evaluation of the devastating impacts from Hurricane Milton and provide recommendations on flood protection strategies that can be brought back in a report to the Board for consideration. There was also a request for additional analysis and modeling of comparable rain events for evaluation, and the Board directed the use of a professional consultant to lead this regional coordination effort and conduct the independent evaluation. The proposed plan maps out the high-level membership and key players, a draft outline of the scope of work for the consultant, and the phasing, timeframe, and cost estimate for this effort, all of which is included in the background of this item. As directed by the Board, this plan is for a multi-agency and regional coordination effort that will include not only the three cities within Hillsborough, but also our surrounding neighbor counties, our regional water management district, and many other regional and community partners, both public and private, who were affected by these historic flooding events. The plan also includes public outreach and community engagement as part of the independent evaluation, with public comments documented and included in the report. With the goal of accelerating the timeline for these deliverables, staff is proposing to move forward with assigning a qualified professional engineering consultant that is currently under contract with the county. At this time, we're seeking the Board's direction and approval of the next steps to move this process forward. And with that, I'll offer to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner Cohen?
Obviously, this is an item that all of us have expressed different concerns about because of what we saw happen over the last couple of months, and Councilman Vier came in this morning. So I have really two questions. The first is, this is really more of a request. I think it's very important, if we have an independent consultant, that they meet with every single commissioner and get information from them about what questions they are seeking answers to, because every one of us has been out in the community. We are meeting with citizens. I have a meeting coming up where people are going to be bringing me questions and wanting to direct those questions to a place where they can be answered. And I just think we're all in a position individually to tell the consultants what we witnessed. I see Commissioner Miller shaking her head. I mean, she's got to be able to tell them what happened, what stories she's heard from the people. the people in Plant City. That goes for all of us. The second thing is that I think, I had a meeting yesterday with some of the executive staff from the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, and I think they have a lot of good resources already available that might be able, that might be available to the consultant, and I would like them to reach out to them for information only. I think that would be helpful. The issue that Mr. Viera raised related to independence, it's very, very important, I think, that whoever is leading this feel independent, and I want to make sure from you that any professionals who we already have contracts with understand that this is an independent, they're to act with independence in this matter, and not, not, I think, at the direction of staff. I think it's important that they be given very free rein. So I'm going to be interested in how the other commissioners want to address that issue.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. Thank you for that report, and thank you for staff's attention to the details of our request. I really appreciate that. They did check in with my office, and I think a few of the others, and what we were looking for. I know I made it very clear that if I don't feel like it's going in the direction that we need for our constituents, that I would have the flexibility in the future to bring it back to the board for discussion. So I appreciated your comments on that, because we definitely want to make sure that it moves forward, and that it moves in what our constituents are asking for. They want to be heard in this matter. So I really appreciate that, and I did feel confident in the response that I got, that we were going to be able to do that. It is my hope that we will move forward with this. I did have the opportunity to speak with the city of Plant City, and they are definitely on board. I think that perhaps even in the future, we may be going to them to hopefully have, you know, some financial skin in the game, if you will, to help us cover the cost of this, and that's just to come in the future as their meetings come. So those are my comments for now.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Thanks. Yeah, I just can't stress the importance of, in these situations, several years ago, my friend John committed suicide, and a lot of our friends started pointing the finger at his wife because they just wanted somebody to blame. And in certain situations, that's what people desperately need when they're feeling hopeless. And sometimes, there's going to be a reality where there is no one to blame, and it might just very well be Mother Nature in this situation. I think that this consultant needs to take into serious consideration that we had three major water events that brought a record amount of water, both uplands and inland, in a short period of time, and those are the types of things that'll overwhelm any system, and water just doesn't care what you've put in the way, it will find a way through most of the time. So I support it entirely. I think that when you look at areas south of the Nona Sasa, they don't need to just say, yeah, this happened and it flooded. It needs to be, well, this, this area has a long history of flooding, and then you multiply it, there's a multiplier of the level of water compared to those past events, to the current events. And I think that, you know, leaving staff out or not, I completely, I've said this many times, I feel like it's a disservice to not have you personally on there, because I trust your intelligence, your knowledge of the system, but I understand why they want an independent investigation. So what I would just say is that I think that everybody needs to manage expectations, and that there might be a reality that there's no one to blame, because sometimes that happens. So I support whatever. I'm probably going to be looking to vote no on even things later on this agenda, that I feel like this money could be being spent towards the $500,000 that you're going to use for this study, because I think that this is how we should think, is that we had a higher priority come up, and now other things need to be deprioritized. So I hope that, do we have a timeline of, oh, one thing I don't think was said is that this contractor has not ever done business in Hillsborough County. So they will be completely unbiased in not having an opinion on the work that, that they might have done the work 20 years ago, and we didn't know about that. So do we have a timeline of when we expect the, in the initial, I guess, I guess, has to come back to us for a contract, or we already have the contract?
Yeah, if I, I can maybe address a couple of those things. So the idea here was to utilize a consultant that is currently under contract as the most expeditious way to get the process started. What I want to say about them doing work previous with Hillsborough County, this particular firm has done work for public utilities, however, we have not used them for stormwater. So there was a recent solicitation several months ago, awarded a CCNA contract to several professional engineering firms for stormwater engineering. So this firm is qualified for that work, but we felt that they were, because they hadn't done stormwater work for the county before, they could act enough as an independent agent, not having any prior, you know, investment in the county's stormwater infrastructure.
So after we say yes, they're off to the races then today?
That's correct.
And SWF MUD, and everybody's going to be included. I'm sure SWF MUD would like to be involved as well, to make sure that proper information is...
Absolutely. SWF MUD, the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, many other regional partners are included in this, so.
I think it's a good item, Commissioner Miller, and I hope that they bring us some meaningful results.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. And I think it's really good to move this expeditiously forward. I also can appreciate Councilman Viera, but, and I agree, I thought the same things myself, an independent kind of overview, but I wouldn't think that that would mean that we wouldn't be using, for instance, your expertise, or any other incredible expertise we have at the county to be part of it, or any other organization as a contributor. As Commissioner Cohen said, you would want all hands on deck, all minds out there, all people who know particular things. You know, I know I won't be here going forward. As this moves forward, I'd be, I'll be very interested in following it, but I, you know, I do think that, yeah, there are events of nature, and this was certainly one of the most extreme we've ever had in terms of both stormwater surge with Helene, and then flooding with Milton in places that didn't have evacuation zones. I think that's one of the first, first things I'd like to make sure is that the next time, and I think there will be a next time, and it may not be as far away as we would wish, that, you know, that people that are in those areas are very aware, at least to get their cars out of there, if they can't save anything else, or however else they could protect their lives and their property. We were very lucky, I think, with both of these, that, you know, people were very aware, and we didn't lose many people to the absolute storm itself. But I, I do think too, that there may be fixes that we can have, that even in the extreme nature of what this was, that we could make improvements, that we could do something different, that there may be, you know, things that we can take on, whether it be pumps or backup, or whether it be maybe new ways of engineering the water that needs to be done for existing communities, maybe, maybe not. Maybe that price tag is, is too big, but then I would imagine if this keeps happening, that, you know, those places won't be that habitable, because there's not many people that will, can rebuild their houses again and again. So I just think it's important to know those things. I know this was supposed to be, I was, I was in Passageway, the, just a few days ago, and I was talking to someone who identified themselves as an insurance agent. She said, this is the first time I've been out on the beach in two months, because I have been just dealing with the insurance, and so, and she lived right on the beach, but she hadn't been out there. And as we were talking, and then we walked back to the cars, and she said, I'm glad this just is a 100-year storm, and so hopefully we won't have it again for 100 years. I did not say anything, but I'm not sure that it will be 100 years, especially since we experienced, and we even forget about Debbie, but Debbie, Helene, and Milton this season. I hope we don't, I don't want that to happen, but I do think we're seeing something of a change, and with heating up of the water in the Gulf of Mexico, and the impacts that we could get again. And we haven't seen really the likes of Milton as well, which was just really such a double hit, the flooding and the stormwater. So I totally support this going forward. You know, I hope we get the most robust answers, solutions, possibilities out of this that we can, knowing, I think that there will be more to come, and maybe not so far down the road, so we need to do everything we can to protect lives, to stabilize places, and to move forward in the best way we can. So I guess, I, oh, I would guess I would, I was going to make a motion to support it.
Okay. We have a motion. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. I just wanted to do two clarifying things. First, to Commissioner Wilson's comments about, this may perhaps just have been a series of very devastating storms, but we owe it to the people to just have that information, and we pray that we don't have one in my time that I'm serving ever again like that. But to collect this data and to have it for future boards that may have to make really tough decisions, I think is, is why we're doing this, right? So I 100% agree with them, but I also did want to note that in the draft work outline, it does include county departments, and so we're going to be able to use some of our county staff and the, the expertise that you bring, and so I just wanted to note that it does include a lot of the experts, just like I'm sure the city of Plant City and City of Tampa are going to have their experts, because they bring their years of experience and wealth of knowledge, and I don't want to reinvent the wheel here. We're going to take that, but it's going to be an independent of all of those coming together. And I do see somebody else in the queue, but I also, I don't know if there was a motion, I would second it, just want to make sure.
One second. Yes. Okay. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Yes, I think. Thank you, Josh, for that. And also, I would like to say that I do support the independent investigation, and I believe it's very important, because it'll show to our constituents and the people of Hillsborough County that it's not a biased report, and also, although that it may be a little costly, but I believe that the money spent on this study will also, and the investigation will let, it will let the county know where we need to make changes, if any, and where those changes need to be made, and the areas we can improve on, so that there would be, in the future, we can prevent any further destruction of the property of the people, if we can be prevented. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. No more comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay, Bonnie?
Thank you. And continuing with our hurricane theme, we have item B3. This is a budget amendment resolution transferring additional dollars from our catastrophic disaster recovery fund, and Kevin Bricki will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Bricki, Management and Budget. Item B3 asks you to approve by supermajority a budget amendment to move $40 million from the catastrophic reserve fund, and $17 million from the previous pandemic disaster fund to the Hurricane Milton disaster fund, to fund ongoing efforts to pick up debris and other related hurricane items. We expect that for emergency protective measures, which includes debris, that will be reimbursed 100% during the period through January 2. We expect after that to be reimbursed about 87 and 1/2%, and with the action that the board took on October 23, that will bring the total amount that would be transferred to the Hurricane Milton Fund to support hurricane recovery to $117 million.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Thanks. Do you have an idea of, out of that total amount, what deficit the emergency fund is going to be left out after reimbursements come back, just like a guesstimate?
Well, if, so we're trying to have all of the debris picked up in 90 days, so we expect that to be 100%. So after that, and with damage to public facilities, we expect to be reimbursed 87 and 1/2%. How much will eventually not be reimbursed? It's probably millions. I don't have a very firm number on that. We're still getting, you know, estimates of damage, and estimates of these efforts. So unfortunately, at the moment, I don't have a firm number on that. But we do, you know, we, we have those catastrophic reserves, we don't always expect to be reimbursed for everything, but we were in a good position to start with.
In these situations, when we plan to refill these funding sources, do we typically take the approach to rebudget over a period of years? Okay. I just, when we get the number, you see where I'm going. I'm just very curious about what that will entail going forward.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move approval?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Seeing no one else in the queue, please record your vote. Thank you, Kevin.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Bonnie?
Thank you. Our next item is item B4. This is to award a construction manager at risk agreement for the Wy Mama area septic to sewer conversion. George Cassidy will present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner. George Cassidy, Assistant County Administrator for Public Utilities. And B4, we are asking for your consideration and approval and agreement with Westford Construction as a construction manager at risk for the initial phases of our Wy Mama Septic to Sewer Program. The negotiated guaranteed maximum price, GMP, is $34,500,000, and there's a construction schedule of 718 days. This project is majorly funded by the American Rescue Plan, so those funds have to be expended in a pretty quick period of time, and so we've got an accelerated schedule to do that. Subsequent phases of this project will come back at a later time for the board's consideration and hopefully approval. The project is funded, as I said, through state and federal grants. It is exempt from disadvantaged minority business requirements, and therefore, no participation goals have been established. Funding will be available within the Water Resources Capital Improvement Program, CIP numbers 10296 and 10320. Staff recommends approval.
We have a motion?
Move, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. And now we can move to the Commissioners section, because we still have time before 10 o'clock. And Commissioner Myers, the next three items are your items, beginning with F1.
Thank you, Bonnie. F1 is to hire a consultant for the Tampa Bay African-American Art and Culture Center. When the county received these $250,000, we did not have a board in place for that, and the county was the recipient of these funds. So therefore, I ask for approval of the funds, the $250,000, to be used as well consultant. We have the approval from Florida Blue, so that is my motion.
I'll either move it or second, whatever.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Wilson?
That's fine. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'll provide these to the public later, after it gets entered into the record. This item has continued to be brought up very vague, and despite research until the last time it was brought up, when Administrator Horbidell had finally said the title of this nonprofit, I was able to identify it. When I was initially looking for it, it's because it had not been created yet, and that's why I couldn't locate it. The briefings that we've had on this item are that it has an unknown endless budget. It just keeps kind of, the costs just keep kind of jumping up, and we don't even understand the full scope of what's going to be predicted. We were then told that we're going to add in several hundred thousand dollar amphitheaters because somebody showed up at a public outreach meeting and said, hey, I'd like that. I just don't think that when we're going through such big, tens of million, eight-figure-dollar deals, that it should just, that it should be so non-transparent and clear, very clear about what we're working on. I also particularly don't like, and for the members of the public... don't like, and for the members of the public, what I'm looking at is the state record filings of this new nonprofit that was created, that some of the names on here are going to be, and this goes back to my constant asking for clear transparency of what we're doing on this board. These state filings have former commissioners, current commissioners, former state representatives, and the CEOs of major lobbying firms that were now using your local government to receive funding sources to hold as a bank, and then now dispose of, back to this newly created nonprofit. And I just don't know that this is good government, that this is what people expect from elected officials. I find it very non-transparent, and I don't want to be surprised that we are using local government to create our own nonprofits and endeavors in Hillsborough County. So I'm going to support this item simply because this was a donation from Florida Blue and not your property taxes or your sales taxes. But whenever this item, if it does come back, I want it to be very, very clear about the estimated budget, scope of work, and what the long-term burdens are going to be. Because also, in the last meeting, we found out that we're now expecting Hillsborough County's bottom line to be, have an increased burden, because they're going to be expected to run this facility, which was also new information to me. So I do not want to be surprised that we have past elected officials, current elected officials, and lobbyists creating nonprofits, and us helping establish them through Hillsborough County's government. I will move to approve the item. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen.
You alluded to it, but I wanted to just point out that this is just a mechanism for accepting a donation. And it's, I think, a totally legal and appropriate mechanism for doing it. And the people that are serving on it, to my knowledge, are doing so probably as volunteers, and I would assume, and are doing it, you know, as a measure of their civic responsibility. So I think this is a totally appropriate thing to do. So I'm happy to second moving along with it.
I'll just say that we've had, very recently, nonprofits where we were told multiple times that no one was making money. Then I presented irrefutable proof that, in fact, there were people on there, even though they were reporting making $0, they were making $150,000 a year. So it's just become a matter of complete distrust in the vagueness of these nonprofits, because we can't see their financials clearly, as we can't see our own. But yes, while this is a donation mechanism that I am approving, we did, this did get added in as a line item to the newly approved CIT. It also has $4 million of the current CIT that is sitting in our CIP, collecting dust, rather than going to immediate critical needs. So there's a lot of money, eight figures at least, of Hillsborough County's taxpayers' money about this organization. So for me to have to find out the filings of it through this manner was very concerning to me. And that was my point as we moved forward for it. So, thank you very much.
Yes, I'll be supporting this, because it is not taxpayer monies as well. And also, Commissioner Cohen, did you make a second on that one? Or who, do we have a second on that one?
Yes. I'd like to speak on that.
You made the motion, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Wostel, thank you so much for your comments. I do believe in 2020, we both joined the board together. You didn't come on, you came on in 2022. Wonderful. In 2023, this item, so you was on the board in 2022. In 2023, the African-American Art and Culture Center was presented to this board for us to get started, approved by this board in June of 2023. We have been very transparent, me in leading this effort to the board, of every dollar that has been raised, from the corporate side, from the state side, from the federal government side as well. We all know, here in Hillsborough County, we do not have a cultural center in our community. The closest one I would, I can't even think, we used to have one years ago. That was at the GTE Federal Credit Union, and the community saw a need for us to begin to think and ask about building a facility. And I started that effort to champion this for our county. We have been very clear for every dollar that has come in to the county, it is coming for the Board of County Commissioners. So we've been very transparent in all of the funding received, the $1 million from the federal government. Even when we've had our various Juneteenth events, we have now announced to the public of all the funding that has been received and by whom. And so it would remain to be transparent on all funding that will be received. When the process is now asking for additional dollars, once we hire a consultant, then it'll be transferred over to the nonprofit to run. So just wanted to bring you up to date with that.
Since we're talking about it, and since you're one of the founding members, these filings were not offered up to board members. I had to find this myself. This was never included in any public document with the names, former state representative, Ed Noreen, yourself, current commissioner, former county commissioner. There's a lot of political movement on the behind the scenes of this. So none of that was brought to us. Are any of these directors currently or expected to or intended to receive compensation for sitting on the board?
No.
None at all will receive any?
They're volunteers.
Do we have intentions of what will happen a lot on these organizations? In fact, one of the names on there benefits from it right now. Is there any expectation or intention to set up a secondary nonprofit to where they might not be paid out of this nonprofit, but they are subsequently paid out of the other nonprofit, under a different name?
That's not an item we've discussed.
Okay. Because if that does happen, I would like to know immediately. Thank you.
So we had a second? Commissioner, yes, okay. Please make your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Commissioner Myers, we still have a few more minutes.
I think I can do both.
On F2. This is to, when we did the budget this October 1, for October 1, I was not
aware that we had $70,000 in the budget for United Bikers. And then I put it in as my flag item. It was also in the economic development budget. And so I asked staff to split the two between F2 and F3. One received $25,000, and the other one is for the Tampa Bay Heritage Festival, and the other one is for the MLK Foundation. And so I'm going to ask for approval on both F2 and F3, if I can do that jointly. Oh, you want me to separate them? F2, I move for approval for F2.
Okay, we have a second. Commissioner Wostel, you have a question?
Thank you. Yeah, just because of the new unexpected costs that we just talked about of the emergencies that happened in Hillsborough County and natural disasters, this money could go to subsidize that. So I'm not, that's what I mentioned earlier. I'm not going to support this money, just because it was intended for something that no longer needed it. It became unencumbered. So I believe that it should be going back towards supporting these new emergency management situations that we have in Hillsborough County. Thank you very much.
Okay. Nobody else in the queue, so please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to two. Commissioners Cameron Cepeda and Wostel voted no.
F3 is for the Tampa Bay African-American, I'm sorry, the Tampa Bay Black Heritage Festival, for the $25,000 for them, for their activity that will begin in January of 2025.
Second.
Same statement as before, for the same reason. Thank you.
Okay. Nobody else? Please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to two. Commissioners Cameron Cepeda and Wostel voted no.
Right at 10 o'clock, Bonnie.
Well done. All right. We can go on with the very first public hearing. This is going to be item D1. This is a public hearing regarding substantial amendments to various plan-action plans. And I wanted to assure the board, you had had some comments before about some things that you had concerns about. We have made those adjustments, and this allows the rest of the projects to move forward. So with that, I'll ask Brenda Brackens to present D1. This is a public hearing, and there is no one that has signed up to speak.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brenda Brackens, Director of Affordable Housing. We're here to present item D1, to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the substantial amendment, close the public comment period, and adopt the substantial amendment to the annual action plans for submitted to HUD. The substantial amendment includes $480,000 for three agencies, Friends of Joshua House, Metropolitan Ministries, and Seniors and Services. The additional $120,000 is to be determined, and another substantial amendment must be submitted to utilize those funds. In addition, we're adding $315,000 for Florida Home Partnership for Self-Help Housing Services Program, and $350,000 to Florida Home Partnership for Magnolia Gardens. There is no fiscal impact related to the adoption of the substantial amendment, and this is a public hearing.
Chairman, speakers, none have a motion?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Wostel, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Bonnie?
All right. We're gonna have Brenda stay there for item D2. This is also a public hearing, because it is amending an ordinance regarding the HOPE funds. And this is to assist hurricane-damaged and unreparable mobile homes in the community. This is a public hearing, and a few people have signed up to speak. Brenda will present this item as well.
Like Bonnie just said, we would like to accept comments on the request that $5.6 million of unencumbered HOPE funds be utilized for one-time use for activities to support the urgent county, urgent community needs in the wake of hurricanes Helene and Milton. Also, we'd like to use a one-time exception to be able to help those that are 120% AMI.
Okay. Seeing no one in the queue, do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Sorry, this is a public hearing. There are two speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Two speakers. Sorry. Reverend Brian Scott, how is she right in my head? Reverend Brian Scott. Denise Herndon. Good morning.
Good morning. Denise Herndon. I've lived in my home on Gorontle Lake Road for 25 years. This is not just a 100-year flood and a 1,000-year event. You guys have taken $8 million from the HOPE fund for people that desperately need housing, and you're transferring it to the flooding issues. The flooding issues isn't just nature. Our storm drains are clogged by landscapers, garbage on the road. My lake drains, which is Gorontle Lake, drains into Chapman Lake, which drains into 10 Mile, and then goes under the road of 60, over by Sam's Club, right next to Just Love Coffee. That area is clogged with debris, tree trims. That's just where I live, wherever I go, because I don't walk. And a lot of people think I'm homeless, because everything that I carry, I don't really care that they think that I'm homeless. But U-County Commissioners have approved, I think, 10,000 new homes this year, because we don't have any homes. Is this study going to include that? We know in advance, we had, and Commissioner Kemp brought this up, and the only commissioner that has brought this up of this board approving 10,000 homes that haven't even been started yet, and we have flooding problems. It's not just a natural disaster that has caused this. I'm gonna steal it home, so it doesn't affect me. And I guarantee, the man next door to me, on the west side of me, he ought to be thankful I had that swell removed, because the majority of the water was being diverted to his property, and he's on the ground. I know he would have had water intrusion. We need to stop these art council money, cultural centers money, because eventually, us taxpayers are gonna pay for this African-American Arts and Cultural Center. It doesn't matter that you're getting all these grants and donated money. In the end, the county taxpayers are gonna pay for this. And we have too many urgent things that need to be taken care of before our tax money is spent again. And U-County Commissioners, this should be a wake-up call. And it doesn't matter, this is not just a natural event. We know in advance, we can clear our storm drains, we can clear all of the water that's supposed to drain to the detention ponds and retention ponds. On Gorontle Lake, the first three houses have basements, and a woman had still water. I had an avocado tree start dying Monday, because the ground is so saturated.
Thank you so much for your comments. Okay. Can we have a motion? No one is in the queue?
A second.
Can we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay, Bonnie?
And the final public hearing is going to be item D3. This is the second of two public hearings, designating a brownfield in Ruskin area. Yaksha Petrovic will present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yaksha Petrovic, Hillsborough County Economic Development Department. This is the second of two advertised public hearings for the designation of the brownfield area at 1308 North US Highway 41 in Ruskin. The property consists of approximately 2.36 acres and is shown on the projected map. On July 17, Catholic Charities Las Villas Inc. submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the parcel at 1308 North US Highway 41 Ruskin as a brownfield area pursuant to Section 376.80 2A Florida statutes. Designation provides certain potential benefits to the developer associated with the cleanup of the site. There is no financial impact to the county associated with this designation. An advertised community meeting on this designation was held on Monday, September 16, 2024, at St. Anne's Catholic Church, and two citizens provided public comment. The public comment related only to drainage issues for the proposed project and was not regarding the designation itself. The first public hearing was held on Wednesday, October 2, 2024, and no public comment was received. Staff has reviewed the application and the applicable criteria, and based on the submitted documents, finds that the proposed designation and subsequent development of the property meet the criteria set under the state law for the designation. Staff recommends approval of the resolution designating the brownfield area. By approving this brownfield area designation and the attached resolution, Board of County Commissioners is finding that Catholic Charities Las Villas Inc. has established all the statutory criteria in Section 376.80 2A Florida statutes. I, along with the applicant and its representatives, Vivian of Reasons Battles, the County Attorney's Office, and Development Services and Affordable Housing are here to answer any questions. This is a public hearing.
We have no one to speak? Have no one in the queue? Do we have a motion, please?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
And our next item is a 1015 item. So if you'd like to waive your rules to hear the special appearance by Craig Richard, President and CEO of Tampa Bay Economic Development Council, this would be item E1.
So move to waive the rules.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, second by Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good to be with you today. Craig Richard, President and CEO of the Tampa Bay Economic Development Council. And the first thing I want to do is thank you, the Commissioners, for your leadership during the hurricanes. You know, there's not a lot we can do to direct where hurricanes go, but we can prepare and we can respond. And the business communities- And the business communities all around the country are watching how Hillsborough County responds. And so the way that you respond to this is admirable. I encourage you to keep it up. We are really excited about working with your economic development staff to make sure that our business community has what it needs to be in full recovery mode. So again, I just wanted to quickly open that up and say thank you for all your leadership that you've provided during that time. Today, I'm here to present our annual report. It's going to be brief because twice a year, we get together, and I give you a half-year update, then I give you a final update on what's going on. So let me go to the next slide. This year, we worked on 15 projects that closed in Hillsborough County. Eight of these projects were actually retention companies. While many projects that are recruited here, they get the headlines of new companies locating here, I want to point out the emphasis on our local companies expanding and growing. So we had eight local companies that expanded and grew this year. Of the 15, we had six foreign companies to locate here. Now, that just says something in itself that, you know, Hillsborough County is being recognized globally for attracting capital and companies from companies across the globe to locate here. Six of those were foreign direct investment companies, and I just want to add that about 50% of our pipeline of companies are actually international companies. In terms of our metrics, you could see that of the 15 projects that we closed this year, they created or announced 1,185 jobs with about $80 million in capital investment. And I'm really proud to say that these are the types of jobs that will help grow our economy. The average wages for these jobs are $83,000. So that's way above the county's median wage, and we're excited about the fact that we're contributing to the growth of our local economy. Another metric that is measured in our contract with you is that we're responsible for non-government funding of our organization, and so we have a goal of 1.75 million. We've actually were able to raise 2.3 million, so that's 134% of our goal. What this means is that of our budget, about 80% of that comes from private funds. About 10% comes from the county, and 10% comes from the city. So we want you to know that the business community is a big partner with you in economic development. Another project that we're really pleased to talk about is Cadmus Dental Lab. This is an example of one of our local projects expanding. Cadmus Dental Lab is a leading fabricator of high-quality prosthetics, and they actually plan to double their workforce and their office space and move it into Ebor City in more than 21,000 square feet. So that's a big plus for one of our companies. Some of our business development activities included a mission to San Francisco. We hosted a delegation of 11 business leaders to go to San Francisco, along with our 2024 Chair, Mr. Joe Lopano. And they got a chance to meet with executives from JLL and got an overview of the state of San Francisco, and we got a chance to tour Amgen's new R&amp;D facility, which is south of San Francisco. Just a reminder, Amgen has a big facility here in Tampa, and it's important that, you know, we go and understand what they're about, and then they did a great job of welcoming us and showing us some of their business lines there in San Francisco. I mentioned earlier some of our international companies. Part of that is because of our collaboration and partnership with this tribe-county partnership with Pasco and Pinellas County. So we get together, and we brand ourselves as Global Tampa Bay. And just recently, we hosted a trade and investment mission to Vancouver, Canada. We had about 30 business and government leaders to go with us. We had three companies that did one-on-one meetings to try to foster sales with local companies in Canada. And so they met to try to sell their wares and services abroad. We had a chance to meet with the mayor of Vancouver, and we took a tour of Vancouver Airport's Innovation Office and saw some just amazing technology that's being developed in the aerospace industry. And then we toured the University of British Columbia's Quantum Matter Institute and Immuno Engineering Department, and that made me feel real dumb, but nevertheless, it was a great experience. Every year, we survey companies to get a feel for the pulse of the business community. And this year, we've surveyed 93 local companies that participated in this survey. Nearly 55% of them said that they are increasing sales, which is a good sign, that's a good indicator for our local economy. And about 55% said they were also increasing their local employment over the past year. So the growth of these local companies is a good positive indicator for the health of our local economy. 21% that said they were still having difficulties hiring. So that means there's opportunities for us in our training programs, workforce training programs, and we're working with our partners at Career Source to assist them with that. Give you a brief update on Make It Tampa Bay. Just a refresher, Make It Tampa Bay is our partnership with Visit Tampa Bay. This program is actually the brainchild of your economic development administrator, Ron Barton. And what we do is we partner together to come up with the messaging to attract young talent to the area to help fill some of the jobs that are needed for the companies that we're working with. We've targeted young professionals in New York, Boston, Chicago, and DC, and recently we added Dallas to that mix. We are getting fantastic results. This year's website traffic is 35,000 users between April and June versus only 2,600 users than the previous period from January to March. So that shows you that we're getting the momentum that we'd like to see from a website traffic standpoint. The top paid sources for driving the website, of course, are Forbes, LinkedIn, and some streaming TV channels. One of the things that we're getting the most, I guess, engagement from some of these young professionals are from New York, Chicago, and Dallas, and even Boston. And right outside of DC, there's a community called Ashburn, so it's part of the DC metro area. Great positive results from some of these markets. And just through June, across all of these channels, we were able to garner 56.3 million impressions for this campaign. Speaking of LinkedIn campaigns, we kicked off our latest campaign that ran through September 30. These were two campaigns. One was a LinkedIn campaign targeting young professionals and companies, and the other campaign is more specific towards targeting specific industry sectors through our artificial intelligence platform. Both campaigns directed users to use the new EDC website that we refreshed this past year, and we asked them to fill out a form, give us some information about themselves. And so when we did that, we had over 437,000 impressions that led to 1,000 clicks and ultimately five new projects in our pipeline. That's how wide a net we have to cast just to get a few leads and projects that is interested in moving to or locating or expanding in Hillsborough County. Quick update on some of our community development efforts. I think it's important to know that, you know, economic development is designed to benefit the broad local economy, but we have to be intentional in directing investment into the communities that need them most. And so this is what our community development efforts try to do. Two things I want to brief you about is, one, we actually had a chance to host 23 life sciences companies from the UK. We brought them here for a two-day tour, whirlwind tour of all the things that Hillsborough County has to offer in terms of life sciences. We toured USF Health, Camels, the USF Research Park, and then we hosted a fireside chat along with a pitch night for those UK companies to pitch investors and business leaders in Hillsborough County. The second thing I want to talk about is it actually complements the UK Life Sciences delegation that we hosted. Is an update on the Tampa Medical and Research District. And as you know, the Medical Research District is really the brainchild of John Kouris over at TGH. And just this past, two months ago, we hosted, we launched, I should say, the new brand for the Medical Research District, and we had a fireside chat that included John Kouris, Ron Cristaldi, and several others from the life sciences sector to talk about how we can position Tampa and Hillsborough County to achieve the status of a globally renowned life sciences and research innovation district. And so we're excited about the movement in that regard. Still a lot to do. This is only like a year and a half into this initiative, and we'll keep you posted as we move along with it. That's my update for today. Again, I want to thank you for your partnership. People have heard me say many a times that economic development is a team sport, and it's partners with you, government, academia, and the business community that makes us successful. So again, thank you, and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for that powerful presentation. Commissioner Wollstel?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. Richard, for that presentation. Bear with me, as you heard earlier, I always have questions for our nonprofits. As I'm sure you're aware, I brought forward an item. Some of the meat of it got taken out of my bullet points that I wanted. I remember one of my bullet points that I got really attacked on was my $200,000 a year cap, and so many people were like, no nonprofit CEO makes that much money in a nonprofit. And I just said, well, you know, I believe that you're wrong. I've pointed out recently that the CEO of Tampa Family Health makes like $800,000 a year, and they're almost completely federally subsidized, but also Hillsborough County taxpayer subsidy. And I just, I find those things offensive because people don't know that people are benefiting so much off of their taxes. Yours is different, yours is hybrid, yours is majority supplemented by the private sector. But I tried to find, I tried to look up yours. I've had to take it upon myself because my colleagues in the past declined going through all of our nonprofits, which that number is now over 101 that Hillsborough County taxpayers are helped subsidize. Yours was odd, is I found a couple of different filings, Tampa Bay Economic Prosperity Foundation, and then Tampa Bay Economic Development Council. The one didn't offer me much information. So is all of your budget, reported budget, through the Prosperity Foundation, or is it through a different filing I couldn't locate? Because you said your budget was 2.3 million, which is different than this filing, so I'm assuming you've got two different budgets that I couldn't find.
So the EDCs is under the 501(c)(6), and it is completely, our operating budget is under the EDC's budget. The foundation was set up to fund our inclusive economic development initiatives. And so we were able to raise about $2 million from private sources to fund things like our community development initiatives that I just talked about. So that's the whole purpose of the two different organizations. So one's a C3, the foundation is a C3, the EDC is a C6. And so we're limited on how we can raise funds and how we can spend funds with the C6. The C3 allows us more breadth into philanthropic giving, and so that's the purpose for that.
Okay, so the C3, which is the Prosperity Foundation.
Right.
So on its 990, it links to tampaayedc.com. So they both work under the same
Right.
doing business as.
The foundation is a subsidiary of the EDC.
Okay, see, bear with me. These are all, it's very convoluted, and there's like this waterfall of me trying to find money in these situations. So how much budget then is the C6 that I couldn't identify?
Yeah. The total budget for the C6 is about, this year's about $4.7 million.
Okay. And then, okay, so then what was the $2.3 million budget that you said earlier in this presentation? That threw me off.
The $2.3 million budget? I'm not sure which one you're referring to.
You said that you had a total budget this year of about $2.3 million.
No, that was, that's not the total budget. That's 2.3 million of private sector money raised.
Okay.
Yeah.
I could not find, in our own budget, you're not listed under our new nonprofit list that I could find. I don't know if staff could, I looked, it's not there. Do you know how much the county contributes to, which organization do we contribute to is my first question?
Good question. So the, we have a contract with the county, which is why I'm up here reporting on behalf of the contract. The contract amount is $450,000.
Annually?
Annually, of our $4.7 million budget. That's why I said it's about roughly 10% of our budget.
Okay. You know, I appreciate, and I think that initially when this started up, I think that, I think that's important for all of my colleagues to know, especially just we found out that there, we have an initial nonprofit that we're contracted to, then they have a subsidiary. I'm going to have to go and pull up. I'm always, I always congratulate everyone for their success, and I believe that the private sector should be the ones paying into this, and that they should pay you every penny that they think that you're worth. My challenge is, is when, on these organizations, when it's taxpayers' money, on this 990, which is public information, I see that your income from this one is $542,000. Are you also paid out of the C6 that I can't find?
The C6 is the EDC. The C3 is the foundation.
So this is, oh, the C, so, but is this your total comp, or is there an additional filing I can find to see?
That's total.
This is total.
And that also includes benefits that have accrued that were payouts, so that's not my annual.
I see your base is 355, your bonuses are 75 for other. I just, this is why when we're doing this contract and all of the other 101 contracts, I don't even know if this one's included in the 101, since I couldn't find them on our own budget. I just think that things that were created a long time ago, we have to, at some point, create an evolutionary cycle and say, hey, did we accomplish it? Great job, and should we move on to something else? But I don't know. I just think that these are the types of granular information that no one that I've been working with the past two years has known or been willing to talk about. And I think that as a matter of transparency, we just went through huge disasters, everyone's struggling economically, and I think that we've made good decisions in the past. People are on tough times, and as we go forward into this next year, that this board is probably going to have to be willing to make tough decisions and weigh certain things like this that I don't think have been included as variables in our past conversations. So anyways, I thank you for your time. I hope that the business sector continues to invest in you because you look to be attracting a lot of good talent and high-paying jobs to the area, so I appreciate your time today, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Wollstel. And I just want to, again, thank you for your partnership. Businesses are reluctant to invest in communities that aren't investing in economic development. So, you know, when you look at the return on investment that the county gets on this, it's exponential. So again, thank you so much.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I just want to first note a comment to Commissioner Wollstel's notation about the budget. You know, it's interesting that in this meeting, we've had a couple of moments where we've addressed the budget. For example, in Commissioner, sorry, in Commissioner Meyer's note, she said, you know, well, I didn't know that the 70,000 was already there, and then, you know, Commissioner Wollstel's having issues figuring out. I think what this said what this says is, my confusion, when we were talking about the budget, is a very new commissioner sort of being thrown into the deep end of, or the end of a budget cycle. I thought I was just confused. But apparently, it's just a very difficult budget. So, I'm hoping in the year to come, whatever we need to do to make sure that we can find all of these things on the nonprofit list and that, I think needs to be addressed. So, I'm going to move on. But I wanted to say, with my background in the Plant City Chamber, I've worked closely with Jake Austin before, and now Steve Mori. I understand the value of the EDC. I understand the nature of why it's set up the way it is, because it allows you to be nimble and private, which is what these organizations need when they're looking at moving away from other cities or, you know, perhaps starting a new business here. So, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the work that you do. It looks that you're very successful. I've heard nothing but wonderful things about it. And I know that our Plant City EDC has worked very closely with you all.
Indeed.
And I just wanted to say, thank you for the good work, and thank you for your report today.
And thank you for those comments, Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much. I also want to thank you for your work. I think it's, it's very important work for the community. You know, just to weigh in on some of the earlier discussion, I think that a public sector county contribution of about 10% of the operating costs of the EDC, to me at least, on the surface, that sounds like a very reasonable deal. So, I really am thrilled about the fact that the private sector has taken on so much of the load. I also want to say that, Commissioner Wosso, I think looking at salaries across the board in nonprofits is absolutely worthwhile and appropriate. And I applaud you for bringing up what are sometimes difficult issues. But I think it's very important, when we make that analysis, that we look at what is customary in the industry. Because so often, we are competing against other places, other entities that are similarly situated, to get top talent. And one of the things that has been clear to me, particularly with some of the executive searches that we've done, you know, in other agencies where we sit on the boards, is that this is a very, very competitive environment. And a lot of times, you know, in the past, these, some of these positions were extremely, extremely competitive. Now, I see a lot of situations out there where we're actually unable to find what we're, what we're looking for. So, I hope that when we, when we do this analysis going forward, part of it will involve an analysis of what's going on in that particular industry. Because I think that can have, have a real effect on what we see as appropriate compensation. So, I'll leave it at that.
Good. Thank you for your comment. Commissioner Kemp?
And I'll agree with the comments that were made. And I used to, when I first started out, I was looking at things like salaries for some of these positions. I never brought it up or raised it, except it maybe became a discussion one time on one of the boards I was on, and kind of looked at a scans and thought, wow, that's really big compensation for a public-serving organization, basically. And I still have some questions about some of what I saw in the community. I do agree that it's hard to bring up a raise, and it's usually something I think that's more quietly done. But I did, I also learned some lessons over my eight years, and one of them was exactly what you said, that the market, I mean, you know, where you can't hire for some of these positions. There's only one of this or one of that in your whole area. So, you have to be competitive with the national market. You can't be looking at the local market necessarily and judging against some other things, unless you're, you know, willing to take what, who may apply for within that salary range. So, I think it's important, and I've taken note of that as I've done, as I've, I think, grown in the position of looking at how that is. Because that wasn't an area that I was, used to necessarily looking at. But anyway, with that said, I'd just like to thank you, worked well over the years, and appreciate that, and think it is certainly important value in the community to, for an employer when they come, or a business, to have some place to kind of ask some questions to. Wouldn't we all like that? You know, if there was those kinds of things in any new community we move to, that could kind of guide things and, you know, give someone some ideas about where they might go or what, what is there. So, I think it's important in terms of the community and when we attract business. So, thank you. And, you know, I think we've, we've had good service, and I appreciate it.
We did. Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. It was a pleasure serving with you.
And Craig, I'll just sum it up, saying that, thank you for all that you do, you forever bringing in new companies here, your travel, just thinking about the Tampa Medical Research with TGH to launch that. And then also, really important, is the young professionals that you're bringing here. As we become seniors, we're going to need the young people to continue to lead the way here. Can we have a motion to receive the report? Kind of motion by Commissioner Wosso, second by Commissioner Miller. Please record your vote. Thank you.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Right. Thank you, Commissioners. Have a great day.
You too.
And thank you for your flexibility from being bumped from the last board meeting.
Bye.
All righty. We have, the next three items are related. The first one is Item G2, which is to receive an update on the One Water Project, including the number of MBEs that are working on the project, which what will follow is modifications to contracts in Item B5, and then in B6. So, with that, I'll turn it over to George Cassidy, who will present these three items, beginning with G2.
Good morning again.
Good to see you again, George Cassidy, Public Utilities. And I'd like to just mention to you that Lisa Ray, our Water Resources Director, is out this week due to some family matters. She's put together these presentations and this information. So, I just want to acknowledge the fact that she's been working hard on all of this, and I'll try to muddle my way through it. So, Commissioner Myers asked us some time ago to give an update on the One Water Project, One Water Program, and how we're doing on MBE, bless you, MBE participation. And so, I think it's, it's good to kind of understand that this is a multi-phase, multi-year project program, if you will. It covers not just a wastewater treatment plant that's brand-new in the South County, but also up to 30 miles of transmission main, both in wastewater and also reclaimed water. So, we send wastewater out to be treated. We bring the reclaimed water back for beneficial reuse. And then also, we have the heart of the whole operation, which is a very significant wastewater pump station that'll be located on our, on our ELAP property, just east of 301. So, in the, I mentioned the phases. We've got our first phase, which was Phase 1A. That's kind of like a preliminary engineering. That's all the data collection. That's getting everything all put together. The subsequent phases, one that you'll be hearing next, is Phase 1B, which is detailed design and some really early preparation for construction. Phase 1C, and then 2 will be down the line. We'll be coming back to you for, with each subsequent phases for your consideration and approval. On the original contract, there was a 14% goal that was established for the entire project. And as you probably know, design sometimes presents a challenge. There are limited number of contractors that are, that are able to support the initial design work. The initial plan was for 2% during the engineering. On Phase 1A, the contractor actually achieved almost 6%, which, again, I think we're just trying to be diligent to make sure that they're getting all of the small business, the minority business participation that they can. Going over some of the numbers, there was a 2.3 initial kind of proposed fee of $82,000. We actually wrote some work orders for $214,000, or a total of 6%, of the contract amount. In Phase 1B, we're looking at almost 8% of work orders being submitted. So, again, it's that incremental increase in the participation, which we're real happy to see. The lion's share of all of the participation will occur during the construction phase. And just as a reminder, this is a total program value of $700 million. It's singularly the largest program project, if you will, that Water Resources has ever engaged in. It's probably one of the biggest that the county has ever had. So, it's a significant effort. In terms of the minority outreach, I had to give a shout-out to Ken Jones and Economic Development. They have been working tirelessly to help connect the dots. We've got outreach efforts with the minority community. We've got, GARNY has been partnering with us on that. So, make sure that when we get ready to go into construction, we are connecting business enterprises with the big contractor to be able to fulfill certainly that 14%, if not better than that. Right now, we've got over 130 companies that have signed up with GARNY at these outreach efforts and doing the communication and working through that inevitable, hopeful opportunity for them. And that's a short and sweet presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
And thank you, George, for the update. Okay. A motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Wosso. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Continue on George.
Thank you. The next item is Item B5. This is to approve the first modifications to the Progressive Design-Build Agreement as related to the South County Water Conveyance and Treatment Project.
Thank you. George Cassidy, once again, B5, we're looking for consideration and approval of the first modification of the Progressive Design-Build Contract or Agreement with GARNY Companies for Phase 1B, which are initial construction and initial construction for Phase 2 for the South County Wastewater One Water Program. This modification increases the contract amount by $60 million, approximately $60 million, to a total of $63,760,611. And I'd like to point out that the significant portion of this $60 million increase is going to be for allowances, which will allow us the opportunity to do owner-directed purchases. As the design-build team identifies big pieces of equipment that we'll need for the program, we're able to purchase that early. The benefit of that is we avoid sales tax. So, in a traditional bid contract, contractor's responsible for it all. They go out and buy all the parts and the pieces. In this case, we have the opportunity to save some significant dollars through owner-directed purchases. Included, and included in this modification are allowances for that, both in design and permitting, as well as these large equipment purchases. In the original award, the contractor committed, again, to MBE goal of 14% for the entirety of the project. As of this modification, and through the initial design, the contractor had achieved almost 6% of participation. The Economic Development Department has reviewed the performance of the contractor and projects that he will, they will, achieve the participation goal by project completion. Funding is available with the Water Resources Department within their approved CIP. Purchase orders will only be issued against approved budgets. Water Resources recommends approval.
Senator Craig, can we have a motion, please?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you, George. Bonnie?
And the final piece of this is Item B6 regarding professional services.
Thank you, Bonnie. B6, again, a consideration and approval for the fifth modification to an agreement with Corolla Engineering for continuing professional services associated with One Water Program. And so, this contract with Corolla Engineering, they're our owner's advisor. It's following parallel to the construction effort. So, they are providing big-picture overview of everything that's being planned, everything that's being designed, and ultimately, everything that's going to be constructed, to make sure that we don't miss any parts and pieces along the way. Corolla is, this contract modification is for $1.5 million for a total contract amount of $9,276,080. As with the original contract award, the consultant has committed to an MBE participation of 10%. Economic Development reports that Corolla has achieved 11.23% to date and recommends approval of this modification. This project is funded through the Water Resources CIP, and purchase orders will only be issued against approved budgets.
Thank you.
We recommend approval.
Commissioner Wosso?
Hey, George, are we still in the eminent domain process, or have we started breaking ground on this pipeline?
We haven't broken ground yet. And in fact, the, one of the, one of the engineers that's designing the pipeline route, or looking at the pipeline route, is looking at a couple of corridor sections that we're going to be reaching out to property owners for negotiated easements. If we are not successful with any negotiated easements, we will go with an existing right-of-way on 672. It is not our plan to take anybody's property.
Oh, that's, I mean, that's good news. I would like no homes demolished for the water pipeline. But I was just curious, because I know in this project, there was an idea that was ultimately rejected. And I was reading about the Fed spending like $43 billion on their broadband access program to give people broadband access. It inevitably has flopped. It hasn't provided broadband to anybody. But there was an idea on this, while we're going through this huge pipeline, to allow for just the conduit for the fiber to be pre-laid. And then the utility, the utility companies, after they have customers, could come in afterwards and much more efficiently utilize those lines, and then we could ultimately recoup the cost for them having access to it. So, I just, just an idea, since we haven't broke ground, it seems smart, while we're digging miles of ground, that if that's something that is feasible still. I think it was presented as an option in the original bid, but it was ultimately taken out. But it seems smart. Look, I think that the future is probably going to be Starlink for high-speed broadband, because it doesn't require such a hardened infrastructure. You don't have to eminent domain people's homes. But just a thought and idea, since we haven't broken ground, if it's, if it's still a possibility, to look at it. But I'll move for approval.
I'll circle back to the team.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Wosso, second by Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Bonnie?
And our next item is Item B1. This is to accept the Employee Compensation and Accruals Report from the County Internals Auditor. And I'm sorry, I'm looking around for Melinda. Oh, right there. Sorry. She just flopped. And Melinda will present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Melinda Genzarli, Acting County Internal Auditor, and I'm here today to request the board to accept the Employee Compensation and Accruals Audit Report 2024-13. The audit's objective was to determine the maturity of the employee compensation and accruals management activities, and it was performed in conformance with the international standards for the professional practice of internal auditing. Prior to today, I briefed the Commissioners on the audit report's contents. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have before requesting the board to accept the audit report.
Senator, can we have a motion? Please accept the report.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. We have one, one less staff report. This is Item G1. This was also kicked over from the last meeting. This is to receive a report regarding homelessness for 2024, and Cameron Pennant will present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning, County Commissioners, County staff, members of the public. For the record, Cameron Pennant, Hillsborough County Director of Government Relations. On March of this year, the Florida Legislature and Governor passed and signed House Bill 1365. At the signing, state leaders made clear that this bill would be the start to the state's efforts to solve homelessness. This report outlines the present homelessness statistics in Hillsborough County and the county's reasonable actions to address House Bill 1365. According to the County Attorney's Office, Hillsborough County is currently in compliance with the law and is in proper coordination with our county and city partners. Specifically, Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, the City of Temple Terrace, the City of Tampa, Plant City, and are all government entities in full compliance under House Bill 1365. Thank you.
Okay. We have a question. Commissioner Wosso?
Thank you, Cameron. Yeah, I just, I, you know, this bill had created a lot of concern and confusion, but really, it originated from the scenes that you see in, like, San Francisco and LA, and they're trying to make sure that that doesn't happen. And I think everybody should know that everybody that I've seen that deals with the homeless in Hillsborough County has treated them with empathy or sympathy. So, I'm glad that we're in compliance, and there's not going to be any crazy situations come up. Thank you. I'll move for approval, or accept the report.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Wosso, second by Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
And also, Cameron, you'll give us a follow-up from next year's session?
Correct.
Any changes? Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. We can do future discussion items, and then we could do, move on to our farewell ceremony for Commissioner Kemp. Any future discussion items?
I only have one. And I had the pleasure of talking with staff yesterday, Ken and Sasha, regarding the MBE participation. Instead of having three MBEs to work on, to qualify to work on a project, that we look at the possibility of having two, this would give MBEs the opportunity to be able to work on more of our construction projects.
So you'd like us to bring that back?
Bring that back in 90 days.
Okay.
Bonnie, if I could, Commissioner Myers, thank you for the conversation yesterday. Ken Jones, Director of the county's Minority Women-owned MBE and Small Business Enterprise Programs. You did have that comment brought up in the meeting earlier this year. I had a conversation with Scott Sarama Procurement Services Department, and he's scheduled to give a report at the December meeting. We will include it in that report.
Thank you so much. And that's what I call expedition's response by staff.
30 days, 90 days. We aim to please.
Okay.
Okay.
So now, we'll move right into the farewell. Commissioner Kemp, we have reached a point when it's time to say goodbye. We will now begin our farewell ceremony for Commissioner Pat Kemp. It is never easy to say so long to a colleague, especially one as passionate and dedicated as Commissioner Kemp. Since November 2016, she has represented countywide District Six with deep conviction and class, and her contributions can be felt and seen, not only in the district, but throughout Hillsborough County. Commissioner Kemp has always been a staunch protector of the immensely popular Upper Tampa Bay Trail, led the move to update impact fees for schools, road, fire protection, water, and wastewater. Champion expanded solar energy used at libraries and throughout the community. Pushed for the convergent accepted tanks to sewer system, promoted community placemaking, safe street and transit planning, strongly supported Tampa Pride, advocated setting $15 per hour base pay for employees, backed the apprenticeship program, stood firmly behind the need for affordable housing, and champion sustainability and measures to protect communities from sea level rise. Commissioner Kemp? And that's been the time you've done a lot. But we have more to show you, so HTV, let's roll the video, please.
I, Pat Kemp, do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the State of Florida and the Hillsborough County Charter, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of county commissioner of Hillsborough County on which I am now about to enter. So help me God. So help me God. Outstanding. Congratulations.
I'm Commissioner Pat Kemp, District Six, countywide. This is one of my favorite places. Libraries have been an important part of my life since I was a child.
So many people gather around the libraries. They're such important places, and they have really transformed and changed so much in the last decade or two, to give people access to all this global world that we have around us, as well as to open up community meeting rooms, to have places where people can actually talk and meet and get together. And that's why we're always working to improve them. For example, the Seminole Heights Library is outfitted with the latest rooftop solar energy technology, so it can focus its resources on books, educational materials, and not power bills. We're going to be saving with this very small installation, $7,500 a year, that could go into operations, that could go to help people in the county. And we have this excellent natural resource here that happens to be the sun that shines so wonderfully on Hillsborough County, our own natural resource, that we can use to power this area. As we go into the future, we'll be looking at the way we designed here, Lithia Pinecrest to Lomston, the crosswalks, the signal lights, the reflective signs, the reflections on the street for nighttime safety, the sidewalks, all the kind of retrofitting at every place that we do to rethink the principles and do the best job we can moving forward on all the projects in the county. Well, we are so excited to have this ferry moving forward. Once again, we brought it back for now the fifth season, but over the next four years, we expect to make this ferry service permanent, full-time, 365 days a year. We're celebrating the opening of Leburnham Gardens, which is a wonderful, affordable housing apartment complex for seniors. It's got 81 places, energy-efficient appliances, space are beautiful, they're wonderful places in Belrico for people to live. It's got a lovely boardwalk over wetlands as you enter, and it's just a great place. I'm so happy to see that 81 individuals or families will be afforded a place that's a wonderful place to live. There are so many children in our community that can't function because they don't have enough food in their homes. Their parents, their people working who don't have enough resources to have the next meal. We should not have this problem, but this will really be helpful in bringing food to people. This is a massive facility with massive opportunities.
Have any comments from any board members? Commissioner Corn?
That was really a great video, and it really highlighted so many of the things that I know you care so much about. I was just, as I was thinking about today being your last day, recalling how hard you fought to get here, and that you ran multiple times. And I think, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think it was because you really wanted to be a county commissioner. And one of the things that I really admire about you, and I've admired about so many of the people that we've served with, is that I really think this was perfectly suited to the things that you are so passionate about. The issues that come up here are the things that I know you care about, affordable housing, the environment. There were so many things that were highlighted in the film. And we've not always agreed on everything. We have agreed certainly on many things, but the passion that you bring to this is unmatched. And it comes, I know, I think we all know, from a place deep in your heart, and I wanted to just salute you because you really, you gave it your all, not just while you were here, but to get here to begin with as an aide many years ago. You have many, many years of contribution in this building, and this community has definitely changed as a result of your service. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Corn. Commissioner Miller?
I want to start by saying, great hair. All those years, I was like, wow, that's fantastic. All kidding aside, I've had the least amount of time to serve alongside of you, but I understand just a little tiny glimpse of what the commitment means to serve in just these few short months, and to, to give so much of your life to your community speaks volumes about the person that you are. Because we are not making those big salaries, right? No, I'm kidding. But I'm here to tell you, thank you for your service. Thank you for your commitment to the people. I'm interested to see where God takes you, where God takes you next, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Yes, I'd like to say thank you for your time in serving the people of Hillsborough County. And we have not always agreed as well on every issue that's come up. However, I do believe God has a plan for each and every one of us, and I pray that you will fulfill the call that God has on your life. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Worcester.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you and I have found ourselves surprising to many people on this board as the only two dissenting together on some issues. And if that can happen, I think everybody should find hope that everything's going to be okay. I wish you plenty of time and health with your grandbabies that were in the video there. So good luck to you.
And I'll sum it up, saying, Commissioner Kemp, thank you for your service. You closed, closing a chapter, but you're going to embark on a new chapter, new journey, doing something different. But I look to see you standing before this board again, championing some community project, being an advocate, continue to be an advocate for what you believe in and serving our community. So thank you for your service to Hillsborough County and to our community. Thank you. Okay. And Bonnie?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say, as everyone has said to you, your commitment to the environment and to sustainability, and really to champion causes that are often unpopular, but you were steadfast in those decisions, and you always thought about what was going to be, what was best for the county in the long term, not just what was the easy decision. And so I'm grateful for that. And so I also wanted to give you, on behalf of all of us, as we wish you the next chapter of your life, a little memento for you. Not too little. So a little street sign.
Where's the camera staff? Oh, she's okay. Come on around so you can get the picture.
There you go. And three, two, one. And one, three, two, one.
And it's just a little street sign, not a big, super highway. Just saying. It's a local street.
Okay. Then we follow by our county attorney, Beck.
Yes, very briefly, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you from the time you were an aide, and now as a county commissioner. And you're very demanding, but we, you, there's nothing, Bonnie and I get to see what it takes to be an elected person and servant, and it is hard, and you have to give so much of yourself, and it's so valuable and so appreciated. And I know you're going to do many great things. I'm sure we're going to see you at public comment, and I know you're going to enjoy your grandbabies, and I'm hoping now maybe we can take off some of those future issue items.
Okay. With that said, Commissioner Kemp, it's all yours.
Oh, okay. I'll just say, thank you. I was taken by the video. I know we have our production team that puts together great stuff, and just among, and I, you know, I just feel so many thank yous to my colleagues here on the board and the ones that have been actually, Commissioner Worcester, one of the people that I voted on land use all the time, two to five, many times, was Stacy White. Just saying. And, and I just want to thank my aides, who I think have been just the most wonderful two people on my journey that I could have, Laura Lawson and Raquel Valdez. Thank you. I don't know where they are, but thank you to, oh, there. Okay, I couldn't see you. Okay, thanks. And thank you to both of them. And you've just been really, I know you both work so hard and care so much. So that's, that's been a great and easy thing for me. I'd like to, as well, thank you, Bonnie. Bonnie, I just, I have to say, I think I was important in hiring you, and I think it's one of the best things I brought to the county, for as much credit as I can take for it. As well, Christine, I'm just really proud of our departments, but especially both of you, your leadership has been amazing and wonderful for our county, and, and I don't take it for granted at all, at all. And for Melinda, but I'd also like to recognize Peggy Caskey, who's not here, but Peggy did a great job and was helpful a lot. And I hate to, I'm going to go through this long list, though, because I think it's kind of important, and I'm sure I'm going to miss people, but it's important to kind of recognize this, because I think too often, people don't recognize what incredible people we have in government. I'm in awe, really, of the staff. Craig Richards just said he went to Amgem and heard these doctors and everything and felt dumb. And I'm just in awe of the depth of knowledge and expertise and advice and thought and dedication that, and I think we, maybe, Commissioner Miller, you got to see a little bit of that with the hurricane, but that's just this emergency circumstance, but just day to day of the 5,000 employees of the county, and I'll go as well with our Environmental Protection Commission, with our Heart Agency, which I've always cared deeply about. And I'll just say, I'd like to thank Greg Hordel, John Muller. I'd like to thank the staff here that always makes us sound perfect in this room. It seems like you can, you know, this room pretty much works perfectly. The one time I just remember more recently when it didn't, it was kind of shocking. We even took a break, because it just, that never happens. But, you know, the recognitions that are so beautifully written with Tim Davidson and staff, and Peter and William, thank you for making us sound like excellent all the time, and that we have at every board member meeting preparing scripts, the clerk's office, the parliamentarian, Rick Marlene at the front desk, who was out there in 2003 and four and five and six when I was here. She's still been here and still doing excellent and incredible service. And Diane Glenda, Rick, I don't know if I said your name, as well, and all the people in the public that volunteer on these boards and give incredible service and dedication. As well, I'll go to Scott Drainville, Heart, George Cassidy, Josh Bellotti, who I've spent endless time talking to George about septic to sewer, and he's put up with it all. And as well, Janet Lorton, EPC, Melissa Zornito, Adam Gormley, Dexter Barge, Joe Gross, Forrest Turberville. I've just been impressed by all the service and dedication. Rick Valdez, Kim Byer, Tom Fessler, and Kevin Brickie, who went on and on explaining the budget and putting up with me when I kept asking a million questions to understand how it worked and what it was. Scott Stromer, again, with procurement, really explaining. Damian Trammell, solid waste, one of my favorite topics. Brenda Brackens, thank you for your service. Scott Treppichoski, Frank Strom, Ramin with the, our IT, and Carl Harness, Tracy Gojavili, Audrey Ziegler, Brendan Wagner, Leana Lopez, the list goes on, and I'm, I'm certainly afraid that I've missed, I know that when I leave here, I'll have missed someone that I didn't mean to miss, because I just find it extraordinary, the assistance, and it takes all these people and more. I just think about the frontline workers that are out there on the streets, too, and just cleaning the ditches that we have. It's like, you know, really big public work staff. And our libraries, I know I missed that, and I do love our libraries, and Andrew Brynberg, thank you, Brynbo, thank you for your, your service there. So maybe I can come back next week and repair the lists of the, anyone I missed. I'm not sure they would be, but I'm sure I did it. And I just want to thank everybody for the service. For my, I'm honored to have had the opportunity to serve the public as well and do what I thought was right. And I didn't mean to offend my colleagues when I was the one to six vote, or just disagreed greatly, just, I just really couldn't do anything else. It was just how it had to be. It was just how it had to be, for me, anyway. And I wish you luck, and I want the county to have good luck and great, great future. So I don't, I hope we don't have any more of these storms, but we do need to be, to look at what happened to see if we can prepare for the future. But thank you all, and it's been great, and I look forward to whatever it is I do next, besides my granddaughters, I love seeing them on there, but I'm sure I'll be doing some other things, I'm just not sure what that is quite yet.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Very well said of your comments. Thank you so much. Well, this concludes today's meeting. Everyone stay safe and enjoy the rest of the day.